Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 26, 2023 Ashland Select Board Meeting. We are meeting in a hybrid fashion this evening. There are four of us here in person along with our town manager, Michael Herbert, and our assistant town manager, Jen Ball. Rob Scher is absent this evening and is not here. Tonight, we are being recorded and livestreamed by WACA TV. And if there is anyone else that is recording, please let me know. Not seeing any. I think we're good. So if we could go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Steve, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We do have a number of folks here in the room tonight, and there are also a number of folks here on Zoom. I would ask if anyone is here for citizens' participation and wants to speak this evening, to use the raise hand function on Zoom, and we will definitely recognize you. We do have, once we do citizens' participation as part of citizens' participation, we will also, this is Steve Mitchell's last official Select Board meeting with us, and I know
Thousands cheer.
Last one, best one. And I think there are some folks here that are here because it is Steve's last meeting with us, and we'll open it up to folks for that as well. But if there's anyone here that has a question or something that they would like to say apart from that this evening, I will go ahead and recognize you. And I see Mark DeSoni. You have your hand up. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Mark DeSoni, 49 Northon Road. Two things. With Steve's last meeting, that means I outlasted another one.
Yes, you do.
Yep.
So good luck in the future, and let's hope Bonnie doesn't get two ruckus around you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that.
And two, to town manager, did you get my email message this afternoon?
Mark, I saw it. I haven't had a chance really to read it. I'm behind on my email today.
Well, it's talking about the comprehensive plan and ideas and stuff like that. I would like to have, if you don't read it at the meeting, I'd like to have put it in the record because I may not be the one of 18 people to be on it. So that's my input to it, and I want you to read it to be that, as that for the comprehensive plan committee itself.
I'll do that, Mark, and I'll print it out for the group, okay?
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Is there somebody else?
This is Joan.
Oh, okay. Joan, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Joan.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Joan Confrati, One Show Road, Ashland. First, I'd like to thank Steve for all he's done for the town on the Select Board and everything else that he does. Wish you luck with everything else you're doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Appreciate it, Joan.
We appreciate it. Thank you. I guess my comments for tonight, I was just a little bit saddened that I didn't hear from Senator Spilker and Representative Lewis the last meeting that there was, that they were really looking to push back on the MBTA. Maybe they are and just couldn't, didn't say what they were doing. I hope so. I hope that you folks will continue to push back. I think it's really important and for the town. And I would like to see that, see things get changed. I just really think that it's unfortunate that they've pushed this on the towns, and I think that now the AG even pushing back even further is even, makes it even more damaging for everyone. So I just, I don't know if there's anything that you can discuss that you're going to be doing, that you're intending to do yet, or if, you know, things are happening behind the scenes or whatever, but I hope that something can be done. So if there's anything you can comment on, I'd appreciate it. If not, I'll wait for another time. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. I know that when Senate President Spilker was here, she had mentioned that we could put together a list of concerns for the AG. We are actually meeting with a representative from Senator Spilker's office this Friday, so we will, again, make sure that those concerns are heard and that we, basically that we continue to advocate for Ashland in that. So thank you for your continued support on that.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, Joan. Is any, I know that there's probably some folks, are you here to speak about Steve?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else that is not here to speak? Okay. Preston, you want to come on up? I just want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak tonight.
Preston Crowe. I'll be quick. I just want to, and I do want to thank Steve, but I want to encourage everyone to show up for Green Up Ashland Day. That is May 6. It's the first Saturday of May. Show up at Stone Park in the morning, and we'll all go out and clean this town up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Preston. That's a good reminder. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wanted to say something apart from, from
Other than nice things about Steve?
Yes.
You know, I
Sure, they're nice.
I have to say, this is beginning to feel like a wake.
It's not a wake. We're not saying goodbye. We're just, we're just saying, I think we're just saying thank you. So we wanted to reach out to a lot of the folks who's worked directly with you and
Appreciate that.
And just, you know, the general impact that you've made on our community and our board. And so I know we have a number of folks here. I think we'll have folks say a few words, and then we'll say some as well.
Fortunately, we have a public hearing at 7:15, so we can't belabor this.
Well, what we will probably, so we got
Open it and suspend it for a few minutes.
We'll be, we'll be, we'll be okay. It won't, we won't be here for a couple hours, I promise. So Rob, come on up.
Besides, we have to give you enough time at the end of the meeting for your board remarks.
Well, I'm taking Rob's
His time.
Rob, we get to Candlelight Way in Ashland. So I would like to thank Steve for all his work as part of the Select Board in the creation and support of the Ashland Farmers Market. Steve was involved in the creation of the market 12 years ago, and through his support and strong connections to the town with the help of many volunteers, the market has grown as a central focal point of our town. The Ashland Farmers Market inspired other events and activities through organizations such as Arts Ashland Alliance, the Dragonfly Festival, the Corners Bar, Ashland Cultural Society, to make Ashland a definitely better place to live. Through Steve's strong relationship with our state representatives, town management, DPW, fire employees, the Ashland Farmers Market will always remain an important aspect of his legacy and mine. Okay. Thanks, Steve, and good luck at the Ashland Senior Center. I will soon follow you there.
Well, thank you, Rob.
Florence Seidel, 2 Candlelight Way in Ashland, and I too come from an Ashland Farmers Market perspective. When Steve Mitchell shouted over the fence of the brand-new Ashland Community Gardens way back in 2010 or 2011, something, you probably know the exact time, "When are you guys going to come and start a farmer's market in Ashland?" That was the message that he gave. And he started, several of us started to think about, how could we create a farmer's market? And many would say that it was his idea first. Then he supported the concept and the creation from the beginning through to today. And as we went around to other farmer's markets in Massachusetts to learn what worked well and what didn't, we heard several stories of how other town and city administrations gave farmer's markets a hard time for one thing or another. And they marveled at what good fortune we had to actually have a town select board member on our Board of Directors of the Ashland Farmers Market. I believe Steve's pivotal role in both decision-making bodies has made Ashland Farmers Market as successful as it is. Thank you, Steve, for creating and spreading a welcoming, accepting, and encouraging approach from the very early days. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence.
Thanks, Florence.
If I could just comment, you know, we were at, some of us here were at a breakfast recently for the Metro West by the Marathon breakfast, and one of the speakers said, essentially, he said, "Nothing of any, nothing we do of any significance is done alone." And all of these, all of these activities, everything we've done is because of many people and the efforts of many people. So, you know, thank you, you know, Rob and Florence. I mean, you were there from the beginning with the farmer's market, and, you know, clearly it's become a, an important asset to the town. So, you know, I appreciate all your work over the years as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Someone has their hand raised on the screen.
Oh, I can't. Okay. Oh, I see Magistrate. Tanya? I see Tanya. Okay. Tanya, I'm sorry. There's like a glare, and I really can't see the little hands, so
No worries. Don't speak up.
There we go. I know you, I know you will, my friend. Go ahead.
Steve, congratulations. I see that you have now free time to make good trouble. I can't wait to see what ideas you have. And you know you have my support, and a lot of people supporting the town. You are very incredibly open-minded, goodwill person. You have ideas, and it's always, I learned from you what it is to love the town, you know, live globally, shop locally. Can't wait to see what you do next.
Well, thank you, Tanya.
And thank you. It's been wonderful to have you on, I don't know, on the town side, on the citizen's side.
Thanks again. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Tanya. Magistrate, I see, I see your hand, too. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. I have a poem, so be patient with me. Dear Steve, your dedication to Ashland is unrivaled. Your zeal and enthusiasm is unparalleled. You are a one-person cheering squad. For those who you have decided are your friends, and to those who are not your friends, become one of many interesting encounters. They know as much as you do, the book remains open, and they will find themselves in there sooner. The first time I met you, it was at the Ashland Farmers Market. Another retiree, perhaps, I thought to myself. We shook hands and parted that day. I learned that my friend, Bonnie Mitchell, is your spouse. Only a strong person like Bonnie can channel energy such as yours. You were running, you were running for the Select Board, perhaps the first time, or maybe the umpteenth time. Who knows? How does he do it, I thought to myself, and saw how in sync the two of you are in rearing dragonflies, music, and travels to your favorite NOLA, gardening and food. And the zeal for town, I still say it, only Bonnie. And now, what are we even doing? It's not as if you are retiring. You are moving from one boat to another, still nagging away for the town, reveling in all the attention in the castle that always remains new. Steve Mitchell, aging has nothing on you. Here's to all the good things that life has in store for you. Good luck and all good wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Magistrate.
Thank you, Magistrate.
Well, that, I much appreciated, Magistrate. That, Magistrate and her husband Sunil and Bonnie and I, we have been Zooming pretty much every Sunday night through, right from through the pandemic, and we continue to do this. We still do it. Occasionally, we get together, and we went out to dinner recently, and then we celebrated Indian New Year at Magistrate and Sunil's home recently. And it was, it's much appreciated, though. Thank you for your friendship and best wishes. Thank you.
Beth, hold on one second.
I think it's 7:15.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have to open up a public hearing. And so let me read the legal notice, because it is 7:15, and I just want to, we'll get, we'll get back to this really quick. So, legal notice from the town of Ashland. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a hearing regarding an application for wine and malt beverage licenses. The liquor license request from Ashland Fish and Game Club, Inc. would be an addition license for this location. The applicant currently has all alcohol, alcoholic beverage, beverages, like liquor license, which provides service for the bar and rental room. The new license would provide service to the pavilion located near the softball field. Ashland Fish and Game, 3 Ponderosa Road, Ashland, Mass. 01721. A public hearing will be held on the matter at the Town Hall, at Ashland Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. on Wednesday, April 26, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the Select Board's office, Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721, or by emailing susanroby@aslandmass.com. Brandy Kinsman, Chair, Select Board. Could I get a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
In a second?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's 4-0-1. And could I get a motion to suspend?
To suspend for 10 minutes.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna just finish, finish up the, this, and then we'll, okay. I just want to make sure that's good with you. Okay. We're gonna come right back to you, I promise. Can I get a motion to suspend the hearing?
Yep, so moved.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's 4-0-1. So we can get back to the good stuff here, and then we'll get to the other good stuff, I promise. Beth, you want to come on up?
Hi. Sorry, I couldn't let tonight go by without saying thank you. Thank you for supporting me every step of the way. Steve, you've been there. You've been my cheerleader. You've supported small business community in Ashland, and you've done it from your heart, and I'm so grateful to you. So, Magistrate, Brandy, they're good at poems. I'm good at word clouds. So I have a little gift for you tonight, but thanks for everything.
Well, thank you, Beth. Oh, I can't wait to see this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Very cool. Thank you, Beth.
Okay. Is there anyone else here either on Zoom or here in the room? Claudia, come on up.
Well, Steve, I could not be here without thanking you publicly. You know, you really, I've known you for many years, and I know that for the last 12 years, what an important part of this community you have been. You know, as they've mentioned, so many things that you've been a part of. And it's true that it takes many to make things happen, but it takes also a leader. And you've been that leader in so many ways to make this community someplace that I'm, have goosebumps about right now. It's become just a beautiful place to live, and I'm very grateful as a citizen of our town for your leadership in so many ways. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Claudia. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
All right.
John, did you, hold on. I know, we're, we'll get there. I know.
I'll be quick, because I want to go have a beer at the fishing.
I'm going to join you.
Good evening, John Fellerston, 98 Heritage Avenue. As everybody knows, the world is a crazy place, and it's getting a little bit crazier, and the world needs more Steve Mitchells. And my world has been a better world because I know Steve Mitchell, and Steve Mitchell's been my friend and colleague over the years. I can't let this night go by without letting my boys know that I was coming here tonight to say something about to Mr. Mitchell. And Steve is very special in my kid's heart, because Steve was a guiding role model for my son Nicholas. And Steve helped my autistic son get his first job. So I will never forget that, and that means the world to me. And my boys love you and loved working with you at the farmer's market, so I wanted to come here and say that. My pleasure I had working with you on the Board of Selectmen surprised everybody. I didn't always agree with Steve, and more importantly, he didn't always agree with me. But in this divided world of politics, you need more Steve Mitchells, because when Steve and I would disagree, we would be kind of vehemently disagree. But we did it through, with respect. We did it through process, and we did it hopefully with, probably Steve more professional than I. But we did it with professionalism. And anybody who is going to get involved with local politics, just go back and YouTube an old video of how Steve handles himself in public and how he cares about his community, and that's what you need on a local level. And I just wish you the best of luck. I wish the best to you and Bonnie. And I just wanted to come and shake your hand tonight and wish you the best.
I appreciate that. Thank you, John. Thank you. I appreciate that. Give my best to Nick and to Andrew.
I will.
We always enjoy it. I mean, you know, Rob and Florence can speak to, you know, the contribution that they made at the farmer's market.
Well, you made a difference in life, and I'll never forget it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight?
Let's get down to business.
All right. Well, we got a couple, just real quick, before we actually get down to business, we have a couple little, quick little things, just because we do have some folks here that are probably to help celebrate you. We do have a proclamation that we have from, that Joe has
Read it to the top, after the volume. Would you like me to read it right?
You can, you can read it right now.
Read it right here is fine.
Okay. Whereas Steve Mitchell has been a valued and dedicated resident of the town of Ashland since 1975, and whereas Steve moved to Ashland with his wonderful wife Bonnie, and really grew to love this town, and realized that it was a great place to call home and raise the family. And whereas Steve has been a very involved in the community, and for many years has been instrumental in many enhancements throughout this community and for future endeavors. And whereas Steve served the community by becoming a member of the Charter Review Committee back in 2005, and whereas Steve has become a member of the Finance Committee, Ad Hoc Committee, and then Finance Committee again, and whereas Steve decided after serving five years on the FinCom, that he wanted to run for office and did so in 2011, when he was elected to the Board of Selectmen. And whereas Steve has served on the Select Board, formerly known as the Board of Selectmen, for 12 years, he has served with Arthur Shapiro, John Fellerston, Michael Campbell, Joseph Mignani, Paul Monaco, Yolanda Greaves, Robert Hebden, Mark Jewett, Rob Scher, Carl Hackenson, and Brandy Kinsman. And whereas Steve has been on the board and has worked with five different town managers, including John Petron, Mark Purple, James Purcell, Anthony Skiavi, and Michael Herbert, and whereas Steve has served the community in so many ways, Steve was a founding member of the Ashland Farmers Market, Arts Ashland Alliance, the Dragonfly Festival, and introduced everybody to the stage. And now therefore, we, Steve's friends, family, and current and former board members, gather to thank you, Steve, for all that you've done to make Ashland a better place. We here proclaim that April 29, 2023, is Steve Mitchell Day. We urge all residents and employees to make it known their appreciation for your devotion, Steve, to the town of Ashland. We wish you good health and good fortune, and it's signed by our current chair, Brandy Kinsman.
Thank you. I'm gonna hold my comments near the end of the day, but I just want to say that I've had the distinct pleasure of working with Steve since you get on. And it's been 12 wonderful years. And just like John, we've always had our differences, but we learned to compromise to make town a better place for everybody, not just for ourselves, but for the entire community. And I hope that the future leaders who take our places when the time comes can learn by us that we work together for a better town, not for what we want, but for what everybody wants. And I think you are a big leader and factor in that. So, thank you, Steve, for that leadership. Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, no recognition in Ashland is appropriate without a presentation of some kind of clock.
So for you, Steve, it has the plaque on it, so it won't be a separate plaque.
For Steve Mitchell, you understand that?
Very nice.
Thank you for your service to the community.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks.
I have the box here, too.
That's great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. No, there's no batteries in it, so we won't be using that tonight.
You have to wind it.
So what Yolanda was referring to in terms of plaques, where in the rear of the Select Room is a storyboard that describes the first five Select Board members or Board of Selectmen back in 1846. And we are, but a link in the chain that extends back to 1846. And so, and then the plaques on the side are, list all the women and men that have served the town of Ashland on the Select Board. So, right, we installed that in 2017.
Yeah. Can't believe it's been, what, six years?
I think Jeff got it right.
So we'll have to update yours with your date now. Yes, we will. So I have, I have one more citation. This is from the House, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives. And this is from our, given to us by, by our representative, Jack Lewis. So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Steve Mitchell in recognition of your 12 years of service on the Ashland Select Board. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 26th day of April 2023, and it's signed Ronald Mariano and Jack Lewis.
That's awesome. Very good. Thank you.
This is for you.
Very good. Thank you. I will, I'll reach out to Rep. Lewis and thank him.
Okay.
So the Senate President, unfortunately, is in a meeting with the governor tonight, and she wanted to personally be here to
I'm insulted.
You and her can take that up, you know. So I believe at a future date, you will have a proclamation coming to you, and she'll have the opportunity to present it and thank you in person.
I'm sure. Thank you.
And then one final thing for me, and then, and then, so, you know, Magistrate had a, had a, had a great poem. I've, I've been known to do a poem or two, and only for you, Steve Mitchell, would I do, would I do a poem for you?
So you're gonna, you're gonna deviate from your annual Christmas
I'm gonna deviate from my annual, my annual holiday year in review, and I have a, I have a poem for, for Steve Mitchell. So, "Tonight, we celebrate Steve's 12 great years, service on the Select Board, which we all cheer. Before that, he worked with the FinCom crew, developing a knowledge of budgets and the process we go through. I first met Steve about seven years ago, as part of the Strategic Plan Advisory Group, as you may know. We started the strategic plan process way back then, and will come full circle with our upcoming comprehensive plan. I worked with Steve on the Board of Arts Ashland on the Dragonfly Festival with Andrea that they began. He was super supportive when I decided to run, and lots of calls to check on me that first year after I won. One of the founders of the AFM, 12 years keeping it fresh, such a town gem. He can always be seen helping out, cooking lion's breakfast, and selling Christmas trees until they are all sold, no doubt. Steve worked on the CR docks for Warren Woods and the Valentine, and gave out BAA grants to groups to help them shine. With the doors in place, the Public Safety Building is finally complete. Took years of hard work and a Faford gift. No easy feat. Advocacy, advocacy for our seniors, who he hangs with the most, and keeping everyone informed with his Facebook posts. Always taking the best group selfies to capture the fun, and Dale and Steve's tour de burger followed by everyone. Thank you for all that you've done and all that you will do. We'll miss you at this table, but we know you're not through. Now you'll focus on the COA and enjoy your retirement from the Select Board, as Otis would say."
Very nice.
So, thank you. And it's a, I'll send you a copy that's not marked up, but yeah.
So I just need to check this out. There's, okay. Now, I just want to point out.
Oh, no.
What? It's upside down.
Oh, the clock.
Does it match the, does it match the Public Safety Building?
Well, this
Does it match the Public Safety
It's a new style.
It's a new style.
It was done intentionally.
Okay. Yeah, but Roman numerals typically are.
They are upside down.
Michael, Jen, do you guys want to say something? Michael, do you guys want to say something? Do you, do it there? Okay, okay, okay. So, so, thank you for, we'll, we'll kind of.
Thank you.
You know, this is the theme of the night, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Well, I, I will have some comments later on, but there's folks here ready to do business.
I, absolutely. So, and thank you for everyone that came tonight and that joined us on Zoom as well. So, it's a testament to how much people admire you and acknowledge all the work that you've done for our community. So.
Appreciate that.
So, now, we go back to our public hearing. Could I have a motion to reopen?
Motion to reopen the hearing.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're reopening the liquor license hearing for Ashland Fish and Game. And so, they are requesting a change, and they're also requesting a change of hours to the clubhouse. Current hours are Sunday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from noon to 9:00 PM, Monday, Friday, and Saturday noon to midnight, and Thursday noon to 11:00 PM. And the requested hours are Sunday to Saturday noon to 1:00 AM. So, I know we have Ron here from Fish and Game. You want to come on up? And we had a bunch of paperwork in our packets, but do you want to kind of tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do?
Sure. Ron Reitz, Tower Road, Ashland. We're trying to get back a license that we had up until 2016. The former bar manager decided that we weren't using it down there enough, and it wasn't advantageous to keep paying for the license. And now, since we have a whole new board, myself in the bar, and we're just, we're rolling, steamrolling along with the club. Our hall rentals are, every week there, we're getting requests for more and more, and a lot of it, people are asking if we can use the pavilion outside.
Okay.
So, this is the reason for us being here, to try and get that license reenacted again.
Okay.
And that's pretty much, pretty much it.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone here speaking in favor of?
No.
No, okay. I don't mean to be looking at you, Diane, but I'm looking at you, Diane, so.
You can.
I was just, you don't need to. But is there anyone here that wants to offer up any comments on Zoom? Seeing none.
Do we get any emails?
Susan, was there any emails that came through on this?
Okay.
No? Okay, all right. And we have all of the, the paperwork came in? Everything we have is, is in good order?
Yes, it's complete.
Okay, all right, great.
I have two questions. First is, on the paperwork, it says 12 to 12, but in our notes, it says 12 to 1.
That's the, we're, we just, we're trying to get, amend our hours 12 to 1 across the board, not that we're going to be open that way.
Right, but on the, on the, on the update, on the new liquor license, it says 12 a, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM across the board, but then it says 12 a, 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM on the agenda. So, which one is it? 12 to 12 or 12 to 1? And I'm asking anyone who could know that, Michael or Susan.
Ronnie, are you looking to have different hours for the pavilion versus the clubhouse?
Well, if we had to, we could do that, but it's an option that, most parties, sometimes they don't start until 8 o'clock at night, and they'd be done at 12, and we need time to clean up and get people out of there.
Okay. But Mike, so the question is, do you want operating hours from 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM?
12 to 1 would be ideal.
And this is for both the pavilion and the?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. And then Susan, this is a question for you. I just want to make sure. You left a list for us of available licenses?
Correct.
So, is it true that if we provide this license, this all alcohol for the pavilion, it does not impact the numbers that we use for other restaurants?
They're not requesting an all alcohol license. They're requesting a wine and malt.
Okay, so.
Currently have two, so it would reduce that number down to one.
Okay, so here's my question, though, because on our form here, it says, "Club All Alcohol No Limit, Ashland Fish and Game."
That's what they currently have. It does reduce down, you're not limited on the number of club licenses you can issue out, but you are limited to them because they reduce down the number that you have available from up above at the top of that page.
Oh.
So.
Okay, that is not clear here.
Yeah.
That's the report for the ABCC that I give them. That's in their format. So, it might not be clear to you, but that's what I have to hand into them annually.
Okay.
So, so would that license, the current license that they have, can that be extended out to the pavilion without, without providing an additional?
License.
License?
That's a really good question, and I called the ABCC to find out about that. And we can't because the pavilion does not touch the other building or touch the serving area of the other building. There's a parking lot in between.
So, that means it needs a separate license?
Correct.
So, why doesn't, why doesn't the Fish and Game, let's say, because there's no limit on all alcohol, why don't we consider an all alcohol license for the pavilion? And, you know, Ron can serve just beer and wine there.
Well, no, it's sounding like Susan said that the, that the all alcohol license they have does come from the top ones, correct?
Yeah.
So, we have 17 all alcohol restaurant licenses, correct?
Correct.
So, the current one they have is part of the 14 that are issued, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
But it says on the bottom here, Susan, it says, "Club All Alcohol No Limit," which to me indicates a club can have, there's, there's, we don't have a limit town-wise, right?
So, Steve, what that means is on, on club licenses, you're not, if somebody comes in and they say, "We want to start the Happy Go Lucky Club."
Got it, okay.
You can issue them, you can issue them a club license, but it reduces down one of your license types, depending upon what you give them.
All right, so.
Okay.
I, I would, you know, first of all, I'm supportive of this. I mean, I recognize we don't have one license left if we assign this. But I think because of, I think what's going on in town now with, with lots of potential restaurant and gathering places, I think the town is going to need more licenses, more, you know, beer and wine licenses. So, I would suggest that the board start to consider petitioning the state for some additional licenses. I mean, we, at our last meeting, we had a presentation from a brewery, and clearly, they're going to want a license if they're successful. So, that will essentially, if we provide Fish and Game tonight with a license, that would deplete it. So.
So, let me ask a question. So, you know, I don't, I don't mean to go totally off tangent, but kind of in that, in that vein, what, what is the process for that? And is that like something, as we've grown as a community, will, would the state?
Petition the ABCC. Susan could speak to that, actually.
Susan?
So, yeah. I, I think that's a topic for.
Another, another.
Another meeting.
Yeah.
So, one thing I'd like to recommend, I, we had a conversation before the meeting, and it's, this is going to be somewhat seasonal, and they're not sure yet how many times they're actually going to use it this year.
Okay.
And I understand that you want it just a blanket one. I'm wondering if for this season, we issue them 30 single-day licenses as you figure out this season, and as we try to figure out if we can add more licenses. And then, if it goes really well, and then they can apply for a full one, but it maybe gives us time to add some additional licenses and see what else is going on that would allow the Fish and Game to do some stuff this summer, try it out, see how it goes. But then after that, we can reevaluate and hopefully get more licenses.
It's a good solution.
Yeah.
Does that work for this?
I mean, we're open to anything.
Okay.
The only thing I would say to that is, where there's no licenses, if we're applying now, if somebody comes down the road and applies, it wouldn't kick us out.
We'll keep, no, we'll, we'll be aware of it. We'll keep it in mind. We'll make sure, you know, we'll, we'll keep a note that we've done this.
Okay, great.
And then, as we look forward, if something.
That would be the concern for me, that if somebody applies next and.
Yes. No.
They grant the debt.
Because by giving you the 30, you know, the 30 days, the single 30 days, it doesn't use the license up, but it allows us to sort of evaluate what's going on. But we'll have, we'll know that you really want one. And then you can also tell us, did it work this summer, and are you going to need it more? And we can go from there.
Yeah, because we honestly don't know exactly what's going to go on.
Right.
If it goes, we, we, we're spending a lot of money down there.
Right.
So, that's why we're trying to.
Well, and we want to support that. We want to support what you're doing, but have that balance with what else is happening potentially long-term.
Yep, I understand that.
So, Joe, I know you have a question.
Yeah, I do, Madam Chair, thank you. And looking at the, the list here, it says, "Liquor, Coke, or Wine and Malt Restaurants." So, if by chance, the Arifai downtown, could that be considered a beer and wine restaurant?
No, I mean, am I going to add that?
Oh, you mean for the firehouse?
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the firehouse.
Beer and wine. Yeah, they're going to need a beer and wine.
Okay, but this is wine and malt. So.
Malt is, malt is, beer is covered by malt.
So, would that, would that, would that fall in that category, where it's, where it's going to be a restaurant? I mean, I, I mean, I know we're worried about.
Yeah, so they, they would fall on, they would take, so we now have two wine and malt or wine and beer.
Right, there's two remaining.
They'll be taking one.
Okay.
And we need to evaluate, you know, what's going to be the, and try to get more.
No, I understand that, but, okay, I get it. I'm just, I was just thinking aloud here with respect to that, but where there's two, they take one, there'll be one remaining.
And we know that'll be gone when the, when the other brewery comes in.
Right.
So, here's the only thing about 30-day licenses. Say, say you approve us tonight.
Yeah.
We say we're okay. We have softball and baseball and stuff. We could go through 30 days in 30 days.
Correct.
It could be like done in 30 days.
Then I would say, if you get to that point, then we can have another conversation. If you, if you find that you're really using it for your softball, I mean, you know, if you're using it for all of those.
Like I said, we haven't.
You haven't planned anything, and I get that.
Until we know that we got a license, there's no sense in trying anything else.
Right. So, what I would say is, I would recommend, you know, we, we try to do the 30-day, you know, the 30-day one, the 30, the 30 individual days, and if you say, okay, we're at 15, and we know we're, we're going to do another 15, we can reevaluate it at that point, and we can start trying to figure out how we can get some more.
Okay, so basically, what you're saying is, the 30-day, you only give out 30-day licenses?
Right, so those are single-day, right, right.
And we would.
Single-use, I forget how, I forget what it's titled or how it's.
Yeah, I understand.
Done, but, you know, like, we do it for the corner spot.
Yeah.
But if we did, but if we did one-day licenses, we need to know those days.
Right, and that's, and that's going to be a difficult.
Yeah, I think that would be the, a difficult issue. Sure, go ahead, Diane.
Sorry, Diane Mortensen. I just want to speak in favor of the full license because I, you know, I'm a member of the club, and I know what's going to happen is, they're going to, let's say they go for the next two weeks and they have events there. It's going to take them at least two weeks to come in front of the board again, a public hearing, advertise it, pay the fee, and in the same situation, they're, they're going to go 30, through a 30-day license in no time. I mean, they rent the fields out, they have, so it's just, I just don't think it's business-friendly to not allow them to have that license, and you know that they're going to be back in a couple of weeks.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that argument. I, I guess my concern is, we currently have two available. Is that right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so if they take one, we still have one left over for.
The fire station.
The potential for the fire, for the fire location. So, if that's the case, and in the meantime, we could petition the state.
Right.
For additionals. So, that takes care of their issue about figuring out when they're going to utilize their, those 30 days or whatever. To me, I, I totally agree. It's, it's non, it's nonsensical to, you know, give you 30 days and you figure out what days you want to use them on. If we have one available, give it to them, so that way you guys aren't pulling your hair out. Because, look, you, you have a lot of hair. I don't. But my, my point is, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you want the full license?
I know for sure that once we're approved, if we're approved, that we're going to full-heartedly try and utilize it the most we can. And I know we'll go through 30 days like nothing.
Oh, happy.
Yeah.
And Susan, please correct me if I'm wrong. If, my recollection is that in order to get expanded licenses or additional licenses, you have to go through the whole rule process. So, you'd have to have a town meeting vote, which would then petition the legislature to, yeah, they would have to go through their process to grant it. I do believe there was an attempt at a state changing the state law last year to expand it, but I think that failed at the ballot. So, I think we still have to go through the.
Was that, was that for rest, for all, for restaurant?
I don't remember exactly which, which ones. Susan, am I right in that recollection?
There is a process. I thought they tried to expedite it, but I'm happy to call the executive director tomorrow and get his thoughts on the best way to do it, and about how long he expects that something like that would take.
To add, to add additional licenses on it, with respect to that. If we have two now, I mean, it resolves their issue. And, 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 you know, if we're going to be business-friendly, I mean, that would be the right thing to do. To me, that, in my mind, that's it. And I'm not trying to influence anybody's voting.
No, 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 that's fine. I just.
But I think that would be the, the wise thing to do.
Yeah. I mean, and I think, I think Yolanda's idea was, is good with the 30, you know, 31-day license. I think it's hard to, I think it would be really hard to manage as far as like the specific dates. And then, you know, I, I hear what Diane was saying about, you know, just the timeframe that it would take to have, to have Ron and Fish and Game.
Why we're trying to get it done now, so we have the whole summer, which is the time when we can utilize.
So, so it sounds like we need, we need to talk to, to add this to our list of things to talk to our legislative delegation about and, and work on some petitions for, for Ashland, but.
Absolutely.
So, is there any other, is there any other questions that the board has before we close the public hearings? Or anything else that you want to add, Ron? No?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, okay.
On their behalf, I can just say that I've driven by there a few times just to, to see how the fields are going out, because I know the Little League kids are going to be playing down there, too. And you guys have maintained the building and that's whole site over there. You're putting a lot of time and effort into it over there.
We've got eight estimates. We're painting the building. We've got eight estimates. So, we're going to figure out who we can trust, who's.
Yep.
And like, you, as you know, you drive by, a lot of people drive by there every day. We've done a ton of work down there.
A lot.
And we want to do a lot more.
Yep.
I mean, it wasn't that long ago that the wall was separating.
Oh, yeah.
It's not separated now. It's all.
Exactly.
We spent a ton of money fixing that that we didn't have.
A lot of work.
Coming out of the pandemic and trying to get going back again. That was a tough one right there.
Yeah.
You folks have come a long way.
We did it. It's done.
Long way, for sure.
Okay. So, if there's no further questions or comments, we'll go ahead and, and close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other deliberation we need to do, or do we want to make a motion and support this?
So, yeah, I mean, I, I just think that, you know, I move that we support the wine and malt restaurant license for Fish and Game, yeah, with the hours of 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
And that's the way they had it.
For the pavilion, yeah.
Saturday through, Sunday through Saturday.
Sunday through Saturday, seven days, yeah.
Correct.
All right.
Door may not be open all that time, but that's.
No, we just.
You're giving the opportunity.
We don't, we don't want to cut ourselves on an hour and have ourselves get in trouble.
Yeah.
Right, got it.
Great. I'm just, just, I have in our paperwork that it's an all alcohol beverage license.
That's just.
Their current is, the current, okay. The current is an all alcohol.
So, this is an additional.
And the pavilion is just going to be wine and beer.
Just wine and beer. Okay, that's, that's fine. I was just like looking at this, and I just want to make sure that we make the motion for the, for the license that we're.
So, one, one more time, the motion?
The motion is, I move that we approve the wine and malt restaurant license for Ashland Fish and Game for the pavilion with the hours of 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
Is there a second?
No, hold on a sec before we move. So, let's, let's clarify that. So, we're making a motion for the wine and beer for the pavilion.
Fish and Game pavilion.
And then we're making a second.
I was going to do it separate.
Are you going to do separate?
I was going to do separate for the hours, just to make it cleaner.
All right. So, second on the first motion.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we approve the change in hours for the main building of Fish and Game from twelve P M. to one A M., seven days a week.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um.
With the encouragement that we try to get some more licenses.
Yes, we will, so, yeah, that will, no, it's a timely.
I'll drive the paperwork to Boston for you.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good start, Ron.
It's a, but it's a timely, it's a timely request, so we'll.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we have, we have, we know we have a number of new buildings coming in with some new spaces.
Totally understand.
We already know that, you know, we're looking up at the, you know, all alcohol restaurant, um, fortunately, I was given some information, we know that one of them's going to be applied for by Centi's Kitchen on Pond Street. Um, we have other new buildings coming in, so.
Yeah.
They could have new restaurants, which is what we want in downtown.
We're a growing community, I think we need to, to make sure that we, we advocate for, for our business community, so. So you are all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate Steve.
Thank you, Ron. I'll see you at the desk.
You'll, you'll, yeah, come on down. Thank you very much. And Diane, thank you very much for being my brain.
I'm an old club.
That's a part of the club, I've got people to back you up. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Ron. Okay, so I know we, we kind of, um.
Thank you all very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
We know that.
Okay, so, um, we kind of did a little bit out of order this evening because we wanted to make sure we, we took care of the, um, the public hearing that we had scheduled. Um, we do have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, we did have, unfortunately, Kristin French from Decisions at Every Turn had to, had to hop off, but we did want to recognize, um, uh, Mental Health, Mental Health Awareness Month, and so I do have a proclamation from the Select Board, proclamation of recognition, whereas on April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, we public officials for the Town of Ashland are asking for your support of mental health, and whereas May has been designated as Mental Health Awareness Month with a theme of look around, look within, and whereas the area that someone lives, works, or visits plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being, and whereas mental health affects everyone and affects how we think, feel, and act, and whereas mental health is important at every stage of life, from childhood and adolescent through adulthood, and whereas surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects their mental health, and whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government, agency, healthcare, provide, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and whereas men, awareness of mental health encourages healthy behaviors and creating living condition and environments that support mental health and allow people to adopt and maintain healthy lifestyles. And now therefore, we, the Select Board, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty three as Mental Health Awareness Month in Ashland. We urge all residents, employees, and businesses to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to prevent, to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. I'm Randy Kinsman, Ashland Select Board. So we all know, um, that, you know, the, what, um, you know, COVID has done as a community on mental health, um, it's been something that has become much, we've become much more aware of as a community. Our decisions at Every Turn Coalition, um, does a lot of work with mental health. I don't know, Michael Jen, is there anything that you either want to do, would like to add?
No, I mean, obviously, mental health is, uh, very important, and it's becoming even more important to recognize and deal with in our society. And Kristin and her team, Eliza, and, and everybody that we have working, um, working on this have just done a remarkable job in the short time that they've been here, bringing awareness and bringing programs and, and helping the community. I do want to say as part of Mental Health Awareness Month, we're going to have, uh, there is an event, a light up green event at the corner spot on May first, so at seven P M. So I think some things are happening here that, that night too.
Just a few.
And, um, so, uh, but obviously, we wanted to get it in, or Kristin wanted to get it in at the first of the month, so I encourage everybody to, to show up for that if, if they would like.
Okay. Dan?
Um, the only thing I just wanted to quickly say, Kristin was on, um, earlier and had to jump off for, um, she had something at seven thirty that she had to jump off, but she just wanted to thank everybody for their leadership in recognizing mental health, so.
Um, and just also, just, you know, for folks that may be watching, um, our community center, our, um, Jennifer Wolfing and the folks, um, at the community center are very connected to mental health resources, so if there's anyone that needs assistance or, um, knows of anyone in crisis, Jennifer is a great resource for all of us here in Ashland, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the other thing is the connection between, uh, our Human Services Department and the Police Department as well, because a lot of that, they're the first responders in a lot of these situations, and, uh, I know they've, they've worked closely together and, uh, so I think we've really developed over the last few years a really strong response to situations that occur.
Absolutely, absolutely. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
I just want to thank everybody, you know, all the, all the folks that are involved with, with these, uh, programs, because they are important. It trickles down right into the schools, uh, you know, it's, it's a community issue, and, uh, it, it shouldn't be swept under the carpet. Too many good people, you know, are no longer here because we weren't aware of that, we didn't see it, or we did, and we just didn't approach it the way we should have. So, uh, I'm glad that everyone is, uh, speaking up on, on others that don't have the ability to speak up.
It's, uh, actually, Joe, you, you bring up a, a good point with the schools and, and Jen Cutler, we got a, you know, Jennifer and her team, they, they have a great relationship with, um, the school department, especially through Jen Cutler, and so it's been a great partnership to watch that kind of flourish. Unfortunately, you know, the demand increases and, you know, that's something that you never really want to see in a situation like this, but fortunately, the services have expanded as well.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Um, so the next, uh, item on our agenda this evening is, um, Nick's Pizza and Grill requesting outdoor dining in front of the restaurant. We have John here. Come on up, John. We all, we all have some, um, some information that, that was provided to us, but, um, please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do.
Uh, my name's John Papas, I am the owner of Nick's Pizza and Grill, and I would like to have, um, get some tables that I want to have outside, and be able to offer a beer and alco-, uh, beer and wine outside. Um, we operate until, uh, eight o'clock or nine o'clock, depending on the day. And, uh, um, that's pretty much it.
Are you, are you looking to put, uh, tables out similar to the ones that are out there now?
We had, we had like a three D.
Glad you said it, because I was going to say, uh, a little bit backwards, but.
Well, yeah.
Physical design that he was throwing us.
There we go.
I'll put a three D.
Makes sense to imagine.
Set it off.
It, it actually looks, from my perspective, it looks nice.
Yeah.
It really does. My only, my only comment would be to tweak it just a hair, the planters, line them up with the seam in the sidewalk.
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, you don't have to do that, that's just my, my visual, but I'm just, that would be my comment.
I'll take it under.
But actually, it, it looks good, and, uh.
I'm doing a lot of work in the store, um, to update things, um, make it, you know, a place and, and, you know, a nice place to go to and, and sit down and have some food and some.
It's what folks are looking for, they're looking for that, that outdoor, uh, you know, yeah.
Experience.
Yeah, the last couple of years, what's been tough, you know, the pandemic, uh, you know, not being able to find a lot of help, but, um, you know, now that's, it seems like, it seems that, uh, we're turning the corner, and, um, so, yeah, I'm reinvigorated and, and, uh, we'd like to, to spruce up the place and.
Good.
So you're not changing any hours, you're just adding this outdoor dining?
Yes.
And then offering beer and wine out there as part of your extended liquor license, okay. Yeah, it looks good.
Okay.
But I was, I was going to joke the same way as Steve is like, a little out of order, and maybe it was a timing thing, I don't know, but. It's okay.
But it looks good.
Yeah. Need a motion to approve this, or?
Not yet, but soon.
Okay.
Um, the, there's a couple of things. One, do you have, was there anything that you wanted to add, Joan?
No.
Okay. Um, so I did want to just say, you know, thank you, I know, you know, there's, there's a lot of investment in downtown, and, um, I'm glad that, I'm glad that you're, um, you know, able to invest in, in, in Ashland and your business as well. I'm hoping, you know, we have Beth Reynolds here, I'm, I'm hoping that, um, you can.
Beth has been fantastic as far as getting this together with women, she held my hand through a lot of the paperwork, so I appreciate that.
Oh, that's good, good. I was going to say, I was going to say, you, you know, if you haven't already, to take, take advantage of our business incentive program, because the, the matching funds and, and, and things, um, that Beth can, I'm sure you probably know this already, but, um, it's, it, it's a great incentive for, for businesses to be able to, to help, um, you know, put more money back into their own business with a, with, you know, help from the town as well, so.
I totally agree.
So, um, I would say, I do like the tables. I was, it was funny, because I hadn't been downtown since you put the tables out, and I had, I had said to Michael, I'm like, oh, I'm going to go take a walk over to Nick's and see, just see like, like from a spacing, and I'm like, oh, the tables are out there, so it's, it's, it's easy to, it's easy to.
It's easy to see the spacing.
You know, what's that saying about, uh, asking for forgiveness rather than permission?
Asking for forgiveness, yeah.
I'm in favor of that.
So, um, so there's, so Beth.
Well, just, just to clarify that. So he, he actually did go through the process for temporary seating, so he went through all of our departments, he followed the process, and he wasn't serving alcohol at the time, so I just want to make sure that that's clear. He's not actually doing it, it backwards, because he did get approval from the fire department, the police department, planning.
Okay, so this is just the approval to be able to serve alcohol out there?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes much more sense.
So, so.
No, thank you for that clarification.
We like the other story better.
Yeah, really.
You've got to write your narrative, you know?
But the, the thing of it is, in our paperwork, let me just be clear, I think that, so the Select Board was approving outdoor dining for, for establishments.
Well, no, we were, we were approving the extension of their liquor license to their outdoor dining.
Yeah.
Not the actual outdoor dining.
That's a, that is essentially Planning Board, like.
Yeah.
Planning Board was doing permanent.
Permanent, yeah.
Permanent. But I thought we were looking at, I know that there's a process, but each, each ordinance.
They were going through Beth and this, and she had people that they had to do if they wanted to serve liquor outside.
Yeah, that was a Select Board.
We had to approve the extension of their liquor license to their outdoor dining.
Okay.
On a temporary basis.
Yeah, it's through the COVID, it's through the COVID.
Yep.
Um, so the state just extended it again, so that's what John has applied for.
Okay, right.
And then, uh, it went through all of our departments, they signed off, there's a sign off sheet that goes into his file downstairs with Susan to then go forward with their liquor license.
Okay.
To be extended.
They extended that to twenty twenty four, is that?
Yes, correct, April first, twenty twenty four.
So the only thing I would say is that in our agenda, it's not very clear that we're approving a liquor license extension, so I don't think we can take a vote on that tonight, we can put it on our next agenda, um, because right now it's just saying we approve, requesting outdoor dining. So I think we're not going to have an issue approving it, it just, I think we'll just need to put it, don't you agree, Michael?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it explicitly says on the agenda, request, requesting outdoor dining in front of the restaurant.
We, we could. So, but I guess.
No, it's better to, yeah.
Yeah, just got to double off.
Yeah, so, um, so just kind of, John, just to ask questions about the whole serving. So are, is your staff serving liquor outside, or is it just ordering it inside and then bringing it outside?
Uh, actually, we would bring it out to them.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't, we're not approving this then.
A member of the staff would either be outside all the time.
Okay.
Or, you know, five minute, ten minute intervals.
Okay.
Um, so we, we would be controlling it.
Okay, okay, all right. I just want to make sure, like, we kind of understand.
Absolutely.
Because I think, I think it's probably, we probably can't take a vote on it tonight, but it's good to talk through this, and then it would be more of a formality once we put it on an agenda on a future meeting, so.
So the outdoor serving at that location in, in the open patio?
Right, hold on one second. We could do it before town meeting, we can put a number.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, okay. And the only other thing I, I wanted to ask you about, there was something in here that you might add umbrellas to the outdoor dining?
I mean, I've got some umbrellas that, um.
What do the umbrellas look like? I'm curious.
Say Coca-Cola on it.
Yeah? Can we say, I'm not a big fan of the, but I, I like, I like the look of it now, but I'm, I would probably prefer not to have Coca-Cola on.
Yeah, except that if it's a hot sunny day and people want to go sit there and they don't have an umbrella.
Well, I think like the bagel table has umbrellas sometimes, but I don't think they have any kind of markings or writings on them.
It's a piece of place.
Yeah, so the, the tables you have there now look like tables you've just brought from your dining room and placed out there?
Correct, yeah, those are the black.
So are you going to have different tables to support umbrellas? Is that your plan, or how would you?
I wasn't planning on it.
So how would you support the umbrellas? Just a freestanding?
Yeah, I've got the, the base and everything that would hold it.
And the only, I guess my only comment would be concerned about umbrellas extending out into the, into the walkway, because you've got an awning there as well.
Yeah.
So that, that would be something just to.
I mean, I was only planning on having two umbrellas out there, and I would put them basically in between the, the, uh, the planters.
Yeah.
So that it's not going to be affecting anything.
Okay.
And, you know, if the aesthetics don't work, then we'll just, you know, I'll, I've learned to pivot in the last three years, so that's what I would do, I would pivot.
A good point.
Flexibility is a good thing. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so, so do we have any other questions for John? You don't? Okay, so I think what we're going to do is, we have, we're going to meet as a board right before town meeting next Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, we will put this on our agenda, we've discussed this with you, I think it's a pretty straightforward approval process, but we just, from a formality, uh, open meeting law.
I understand, if you can delay it a week.
So.
We'll survive it.
Okay.
How do you want to handle the umbrellas?
I think let him put the Coca-Cola up.
We just put ten, over ten million dollars in downtown, so sprucing it up.
Let's let him put them up, and if we really don't like them.
He can, he can, he can.
I mean, as long as the poles are still there and the wires are still there, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if, 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 I don't want that to be a deal breaker.
No.
I don't have a vote, John, so it's, it's.
Well, no, I mean, if, if people don't like them, we can, we'll, we'll figure something out.
What if we miss this?
Incentive program that he could probably.
Get some umbrellas.
Get some umbrellas.
Get some umbrellas.
No, seriously, right?
Okay.
I mean, that's.
Good luck, John.
Well, we'll, we'll.
Very much.
Okay, thank you, we'll figure, we'll figure this out, and we'll take care of this next week. Beth, was there anything else that you wanted to add, or you're good? You're good? Okay.
Hey, thank you, Reynolds, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, so we will put that on our agenda for, um, our meeting right before town meeting next Wednesday, so, okay. Moving on to old new business, um, vote to reappoint Mead Tollerman and Costa as town council for the Town of Ashland for a term that would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. At our last meeting, we had, um, talked to Attorney Mead and, um, did her evaluation, and we had agreed that we were, um, planning to reappoint, um, the firm for another year. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you for updating the letter.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, eh?
Okay.
Are we going to take a vote without a full board?
Um, I, I don't think Rob had any issues with it last week, so.
I think like an informal poll.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Okay.
So I think, I think we're okay not having all five.
All right, that's fine, I just want to make sure.
I move that we reappoint Mead Tollerman and Costa as our town council with an expiration date of this contract to June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes four zero. Um, we are moving on in our agenda, um, so I assume we'll, we'll let Attorney Mead know that that's all squared with, okay.
We'll, we'll send her a copy of the appointment letter.
All right. Um, so the next item on our agenda is to approve the request to reconstruct the land license for seventy one Spring Street. This is required in order to replace the storage tank at the asphalt plant. Michael, do you want to kind of talk through this a little bit?
Yeah, just, um, there are currently some underground storage tanks there, and in order to do the replacement necessary, what we had to do is go through the process of reconstructing the land license, so, um, Susan and Attorney Mead and Jarrett Temple from, um, Aggregate or representing Aggregate went through the process of doing all the paperwork, uh, associated with that, and I think all of that's been provided to you, including a, a site plan, and, uh, so the last step is the board's approval.
And Dave, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Nope, Ron.
Did they revise the site plan, because looking at that, that map that they provided us, uh, on that site itself, it showed the office building, that building was torn down two years ago.
Maybe they were using that for reference, Joe, just kind of as a reference point.
And this is supposed to reflect the original land license, right? So do we know what happened, that we didn't have it, or that it? The fact that we're having to reconstruct one is concerning?
Yeah, I mean, Susan, you might have a little bit more insight into that. Yeah, I mean, Susan, you might have a little bit more insight into that.
I think it was from like the fifties.
Yeah, it's from way.
I don't know who the keeper of the records were back then. So we we couldn't find anything here, but he found some stuff recorded at the registry of deeds and then went back and had to prove to Lisa that. They had something. So we just have to duplicate what was done in the fifties, basically.
Okay, okay.
That was Trimal back then. That was legal.
Way, way back.
Yep.
So um so do we know sort of what the process looks like to replace the storage tank there? Like. Is it something that is like an active, like I'm I'm looking at the the, you know, flammable and combustible liquids, you know, gas and solids. And it's like liquid asphalt and recycled fuel oil and I'm I'm just. Yeah, like I was I was curious if it's like a hazmat situation or who from our town kind of um is involved in.
In the state fire marshal's office, I believe.
Okay, okay. All right, so there's 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 folks that will oversee that and make sure it's done in a safe way.
Couldn't hear exactly what Susan said, but like the fire marshal's office.
I think she said state fire marshal's office.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Susan, cuz I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't get into a situation where it's.
Well, in in.
There's no oversight in that.
That land is gonna be turned over to the town at some point, and we don't wanna have to be held responsible for whatever under the ground.
Exactly.
Right.
So let's cover our butts now.
Um, were there any concerns that that the attorneys had on this or it's pretty straightforward from that perspective?
Pretty straightforward. I mean, they've been working on it and so they Lisa feels comfortable.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I move that we approve the request to reconstruct the land license for seventy one Spring Street as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes four zero, so we're good to go on that. The next item on our agenda is um an update on the comprehensive plan. So we, just to kind of give a a like a formal update on it, we are in the process of um finalizing our steering committee. We have one more precinct to go. Um, we had interviewed, oh, God, a lot of people.
Eighteen.
Couple weeks ago. We had like eighteen people that came through, I think it was.
Was it that many?
Well, with the students and it was a lot of people.
It was a long night.
It was a long, long night. Um, but we had really, I mean.
Good candidates, good candidates.
And a lot of hard decisions that we had to make, so um you know, we had so many people that had had gone through this whole process. So we had received, what, fifty six talent bank forms?
Mm-hmm.
We had gone out to everyone with an additional five questions to try to get a better understanding of of um what is, you know, why people wanna be a part of this and who they are. Just because we weren't gonna be able to interview fifty six people. And so we narrowed it down to three candidates per precinct. And then um we all ranked those um those candidates after the interview and we had chosen the um.
The top one pers precinct except for one precinct.
Except for one precinct, which we still need to interview one more person. So. So we're looking to have um a joint meeting with the planning board on May eleventh. And that's going to be an appointment for the members from the precincts as well as the members from the um.
Different committees.
Committees. So I think at the when we have all of our members together, I think we'll have a committee of twenty nine people.
Wow.
It is a big group.
That is gonna be a challenging committee to chair, whoever that may be.
That is gonna be an interesting.
It feels two football teams.
We may need them.
Helmets and.
So I and the other the other big update is like we're in the, we had we had put out an RFP, Jen. Did a lot of work on the RFP with our group and um we ended up with three, three RFP submissions that we've all gone through. And um we're in the final stages of getting those um scored and over to Jen. And then the idea will be that um we haven't talked about that at all. We haven't talked about the RFPs at all. But um once we, once we do, we'll make a recommendation to who will do a finals presentation, basically to the select and select board and the.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, only having three kind of makes the process a little bit more streamlined for us. I mean, we could just, I think, you know, depending on where the scores come in, I mean, maybe interview one or two. But we could do that with the select board and planning board, so we could just have one meeting where we do that. And and make a decision. From that standpoint, Jen's got the price proposals.
Okay.
And uh so that'll factor it. We have to do the.
We have to do the evaluations first before we open those, right?
Are those figures coming in the the ballpark of the price range that we were looking at originally or are they higher?
So when you're doing service evaluation, you have to evaluate the narrative like the narrative proposal and score those and then you can look at them. So we haven't looked at those yet.
Haven't looked at those yet. And this is for the consultant, just the.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, that's that's a good point. That is, it's that's what it is. It's for the consultant.
And if I could just add, Brandy talked about how we had so many people apply, but obviously. You have fifty six people from all these precincts and there was only one per precinct, so that's only six people. We are still looking, gonna be looking for input from those other fifty people. We're considering how else can we get them to be involved, whether it's. Chair a neighborhood meeting or participating as we talk about housing or sustainability, cuz we had a number of people who felt. Sustainability and housing were sort of their priorities. So and I know for some people, I didn't get selected potentially for the for the steering committee, but know that that is just the group that's gonna be doing. The organizing and and bringing stuff together. That is not the people making all the decisions. It's gonna be, we're gonna be really reaching out to the community to get input from the community on what they see and what they want and and what they want this. The product of this to be, so just to let people know that.
And everybody, you know, when I talked to them, they were certainly open to that. I think we'll probably see some of them at steering committee meetings and.
Right, I mean, there are gonna be open meetings that people can come to and listen and participate in some way.
So we'll have our our meeting um with the planning board on the eleventh for the the appointments. And then we'll have another meeting at some point, once we kind of figure out, we'll have to set another date for the the consultants.
So on the eleventh, the joint meeting with the our board and the planning board, what time is that, seven?
So they started seven fifteen. Um, I don't know, I I assume we'll be kind of at the beginning of the meeting, I assume. But I I talked to to Tricia Kendall, the chair, and she knows, like, she said they can accommodate this and it should be a very quick. You know, we should have a list of people and.
And it's really just, this is our, this is who we're.
Yep.
We're recommending and it's a yes or no.
This was the process.
Yeah, we're not gonna not gonna debate or discuss.
It'll be a live meeting. We should be here and not on not on Zoom.
It might be difficult physically to have everybody here, but you can do hybrid.
Do it hybrid? Okay.
Yeah, I think they moved to hybrid.
I'm not available for that one.
They have, okay.
For the eleventh.
For the eleventh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, I'll put that, I'll make sure, I'll make sure I have that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then we're gonna have our first large meeting with the the steering committee on the eighteenth, so.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. So um we'll get there. We have faith. We will get there.
And we are starting to get some feedback on the RFP process.
Yeah, okay, good. All right. Um, does anybody else have any questions on the comprehensive plan or anything?
Nope.
Any comments? So, okay, we're good. Um, the next item on the agenda is town manager's evaluation. I know we had wanted to to um to take care of Michael's evaluation while Steve was still um on the board with us, just to make sure we had his his input. Steve's already completed the evaluation on Michael and sent it to me and has sat down with Michael. I know Yolanda has done the same. I have not done mine. I was out for April vacation and.
Wait, you took vacation? Really?
I was, I was, I have to say, like.
That's okay. We're not obviously not gonna do it tonight.
We're not gonna do it. So I was just gonna say, like, um, just make sure you set some time. We're we'll have it on the agenda for the seventeenth.
Well, I did email Michael, but I didn't get, I didn't get anything back about sitting down.
Oh, okay. So but but we'll we'll put it on the agenda for the seventeenth, so. And I know you're not gonna be here for that.
I won't be there on the seventeenth, but that's okay.
We have your, wait.
You have my feedback, yeah.
So um and I'll have to remind Rob to do that, too. So and I gotta do mine, so I'm I'm I'm.
It's okay.
I'm catching up, getting there, okay. Um, anybody else have any questions or anything on the evaluation? You're good?
No, we're good.
Okay. Um, we have a consent agenda is our next item on our agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to our priority project update.
We're gonna launch tonight. This is the Rob factor, I think.
Don't jinx us, man.
This was, we were scheduling this meeting for one thing and.
Yes. Got a few extra things thrown in.
So, yeah, so I mean, a couple of things I think that we had wanted to to have on the agenda tonight, including the town manager's evaluation and our BA grants and stuff. That will all get moved to our next.
Yes, so for the grants, Rob and I will meet uh prior to the election.
Okay.
And we'll make our recommendations as we always have and submit it and then at your next meeting, you can then vote to distribute.
Okay, sounds like a plan. So thank you, guys, for doing that.
The sixth, but it'll be on next scheduled.
Yeah, our next scheduled meeting, so our our um next, next seventeen. So our next meeting is the is is the third, we'll meet before town meeting. But that's our regularly scheduled select board date, so we won't meet again as a as a formal board until.
On the seventeenth, I won't. But I'll be here for town meeting, but Steve won't be here for town meeting.
So you'll be here for town meeting, though, you said?
Yes, I'll be here, yeah, I'll be here.
All right, just wanna make sure we enough.
No, no, I'm here.
Enough folks, okay. Um. So the next item on our agenda is our priority project update. Michael, do you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, pretty quickly, so downtown, um they got pushed out a couple of weeks, so they're actually hoping to start next week on that work that's that section between. Front Street and Summer Street. So doing that, we should have uh the bids going out for the building connections soon. Those have been peer reviewed. So those are getting going out. We're following up, making sure that everything is being installed within the conduit and the vaults and everything underground from the utilities. So when we're actually able to do the uh building connections, we'll have everything in place. And then after that, we'll look at removing the poles and um and being done. I mean, we'll have to go back and like fill in the concrete where those holes have left. We'll be doing the landscaping and stuff, some of the touch up things uh this week as well.
Good, good. We'll need that for for Front Street.
I'm sorry?
We'll need that for Front Street uh prior to, well, the market starts on June the tenth this year.
So but it's grass, you know, we're getting into prime grass growing season, so.
Yep.
Yep. The question uh related to downtown is um the park, Mill Pond Park, what's the what's the timeframe on that?
Um, I actually think that's been, I'm holding that up because I'm supposed to go down there with the Doug's and kind of review some things or review some options and I just haven't done that yet.
Well, we're hoping to have that in time for the festival in September.
We should be able to do that. I mean.
I would hope so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's basically, they need to do some leveling and then just the final material. But then but then the observation deck, too. Uh, we have to go to Concombs for that, but they're pretty.
And and the idea for that is that sluice way that you found is basically you got filled in and we're gonna continue to see the brick from it. And it's just gonna be leveled, a pathway level with that, right?
Yeah, we're gonna use pea gravel utilizing kind of this hexagonal, hexagonal type.
Paper?
Yeah, type of material and the pea gravel goes over that, so it's a stabilized surface that you could roll wheelchairs and everything on.
Oh, nice.
But yes, so the outline of it will be those little granite blocks.
Nice. Very cool.
Yeah.
And just sort of related to downtown, a couple of things. One, um we'll have on the town meeting, Warren, I know we'll probably talk about this, too, but we'll have the um. The potential um fire station uh lease on there, so we wanna make sure that people know about that for town meeting and and are um coming out to to. Hopefully support Clover Road because I think it is a really good uh proposal for downtown Ashland. I think that would be good. Um, my other question is on the mill building project. I, has there been any changes? I know the last update. Mr. Gordon moved from two hundred to what, one eighty eight and then changed the affordability?
Down to fifteen percent.
Yeah.
And um so actually, Peter, Tricia, attorney Mead and I talked a little bit about today about. And I reinforced the importance of the twenty five percent and um, you know, different strategies that we could potentially utilize to get there. But uh we also talked about the idea of revisiting a development agreement, which is actually one of the things that we talked about doing at the.
Very early on, yeah.
Which would outline, okay, what, you know, the percentage of units that are affordable, what the makeup and the consistency would be, some of the financial items, all of that stuff.
Yeah. Is there any uh any update or resolution in terms of the environmental issues at the property?
So that's so that's somewhat evolving because it has to evolve with the site plan. So EPA and DEP has been involved, you know, pretty much since the beginning. Two consistent issues that are coming up is um an area of heightened intensity. Near ten to twenty Main Street. And so one of the things that EPA is really recommending is that we do a couple more observation. Monitoring wells there to see exactly what the extent is. And actually, from the data that they have, they don't think it's related to the Nyanza plume. They think it could be.
It's just from the industrial uses of the building.
From that.
Oh, interesting.
But uh what's gonna? I mean, we're gonna be looking at a similar combination of a vapor barrier, but then also like one of those radon type systems. So um Gordon's team had just proposed the vapor barrier, but um DEP and EPA really think that it's important to do the other piece as well.
I'm sure they will.
So and then the the site plan itself has changed with the new buildings. I mean, the the, you know, the existing buildings are gonna stay. But the new buildings, as that site plan changes, it'll have to. The health ramifications and the um safety impacts will have to evolve with that.
And are all those plans up on on the website, so we can go look, okay. I haven't looked at it a little bit, so thank you.
Yeah, it's um so that's, personally, I I think the design's moving in the right direction, but.
Definitely.
Yeah, unfortunately, affordability is not.
Yeah, it's going in the opposite direction.
I think you need to remember the conversations we had.
So so that's downtown.
Okay.
Anything there? Public safety building, um Jen, I'd let you.
I don't have much in terms of construction. Obviously, we're at the end. We're working through um punch list. Um, we still don't have a date when the full fire department will move over, but they're working on that now. They were there yesterday, sort of lining up all the apparatus bay and and all the apparatus in the bay to see how it will be uh used. So they're definitely um moving towards moving in in the next several weeks. But once we have a firm date, we'll we'll make sure everybody knows where to find them.
And status on the corrected doors?
So they're still working through, uh, so they've, they're still working through the approval process, so there's lots of back and forth, making sure everything is exactly the way it's supposed to be. So they've had, I think, two or three different submissions to our architects and there's some questions, again, just making sure every, all the. All the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted before they make the the purchase again. But that is, uh, you know, that will still be forthcoming and then they'll work with the fire department, basically to empty one bay at a time.
Right.
And so um they can work on it while they're there.
Okay, great, thank you.
So there's that. Minda's school, they just keep on.
It is moving forward. I didn't get to do a tour, but I know Claudia did. And she went to, yeah, she went to show me pictures and then we got talking with someone else, so. Um, but she said a big difference versus what we saw, some of us who were there a month ago. They are on track to.
Painting lights on. They just uh well, put the main power into the school, so.
Yep.
It's all lit up, the main power, they're removing the temporary lights. Um, they've started some of the inspections and then also meetings just to align the inspection process. So that when it comes time to turn the building over, they'll be good to go, um find some details about. You know, just working through the the whole process of packing stuff up and uh storing it until we actually get to move over and move things in it. Getting every, getting by getting it out of Minda so they can start the demolition and.
Yeah, so we had a.
Still on schedule?
Yeah, yeah, so we had a meeting last week, Thursday. And yeah, so they've rented some storage, so they can start moving stuff out already and then um, cuz they have to demo, they have to demolish both ends of the building. So they can finish the drive so that that'll be done and then they'll continue to do the rest and then move into the fields. Um, that'll be next year. But they're still on track for for next year.
And Jim and John Murray and Doug Small and I are still working on an agreement for Cedar Street and getting that finalized, so we met again today.
Oh, good.
To get that uh through.
Okay.
I have one question for you, Mike, and it's not on, you know, updates and stuff, but I'll refer to downtown. There's a lot of caution tape at Stone Park. There's a lot of caution tape at Stone Park, on the pines, it's up and around. What is that all about?
So it's bees.
Oh, bees?
Ground bees, right, is what I read?
Okay, I did not know, I did not know.
They should be leaving soon, so.
They're getting.
They've been evicted.
They're getting evicted, have they?
Hopefully through natural causes.
I was gonna say, we're not moving down more, okay, okay.
Hopefully through natural causes, but, you know, we've got that and a bird over at Burnham Circle that we gotta deal with too, so.
Hey, we support.
Oh, sorry, Preston.
We support nature and wildlife.
We do.
So, take care, I mean, like, take care of it.
Yeah.
Is there a sign, is there a sign up by the caution tape of why there's caution tape or is?
Is there a sign? I know we put up on social media.
It was on social media as to what it was.
Okay.
With, with the, with the picture and stuff, so.
Cool, I didn't say it's.
That's the positive of social media.
But it's good, but it's good that you, you mentioned it. Because that's a good thing to conversation.
People didn't see it.
Who didn't, people can.
And they're all watching us, so.
Yeah.
It does look a little disconcerting, you know, caution tape, crime scene.
You know, the good weather's out and the kids are leaving, they're going down to the park to play.
Right.
That's all we need is to have them run through there, somebody, you know, they don't realize what the caution tape.
I don't know that there are bees that will sting.
They don't, they're not really stinging.
Yeah, they're.
Okay.
They're good pollinators.
Yeah. It's still, it's still a little scary to hear bees, but.
All right, okay. Is there, um, nothing, there's nothing else on Mendez, right?
No. Um, and Valentine Project, uh, kind of more of the same, so discovering a few more issues, especially on that back corner. And, um, so they have really done a lot of work in the basement and pouring that interior foundation wall and getting that done and pinning that in. Doug and I hope to meet next week with Mill City on site to go over a potential change order that, um, you know, addresses some of those issues that we found, but then also takes into account some credits that we would receive because they've chosen not to do the exterior frost wall. I might have mentioned that at the last, the last meeting, so. That and, um, you know, I, I expect we'll have some more intense discussions about the conservation restriction, probably after town meeting.
Yeah, we're waiting to hear Carl was gonna start writing and something, so. Are you gonna ask about the exterior, the siding?
Well, I asked last time.
Right.
Yeah, that's for next, so when we meet next week, we're gonna have.
Ask about that, okay.
Okay, okay.
Well, no, we should have information about it.
For the next meeting, for the May seventeenth meeting.
So we, so we had talked, like, you know, once you had more information and things to kind of pull it out of this priority project update.
And make it a separate agenda.
Yeah, because I think, I think it, you know, Yolanda had brought up a, um, a while back, it would be good to have like pictures and really kind of show some of the, the work that's been done.
If we're gonna make a, well, one, good to see what's going on, but also if we're gonna make a decision about what we're gonna put asideing, it would be good to have information to make an educated decision.
Yeah.
You know, I think it goes to conversations you and I've had about, you know, the number of ongoing projects.
Yep.
And as we start to clean up these projects, you know, public safety building is a few weeks away, Mendez a few months away. And, you know, I think we need to, as a community, start to shift our, our actions maybe away from new projects and onto maintenance.
Yep.
Because we have so many assets that we are, uh, we're generating new assets and we have existing assets. And I think maintenance always seems to rear its ugly head because we just don't have a concerted program.
Exactly, and I think we, even the projects that we have ongoing right now, we have already have commitments to, um, doing other projects that, you know, have been on the books for a while and getting those done as well. So like Valentine, obviously is a big project, we gotta do the Warren Barn. Kind of like paint should be done this year.
That's moving forward.
But yeah, there's, uh, there's quite a few things that we've said we were gonna do a few years ago that we've found a way to secure money for and plans for that we'll have to.
Well, I think after town meeting and, and, you know, in June or July, it might be good to sort of look at what we, you know, everything we have going on, right? I mean, we talk about these priority projects, but we know that as this is also going on, we're talking about the trail, we're talking about the dog park, we're talking about other things for downtown, you know. So there's a lot going on besides just what we're seeing in our priority projects.
Right. And so, you know, in May or June, it'd be a good time to merge that discussion with the discussion about the eight million dollars.
Right.
And what we're gonna do.
Yep.
Do with that.
And we've been talking about, you know, you know, once we kind of had our arms around whether the, the eight million dollars was going to kind of materialize for us, that we were gonna do a retreat.
Right, and talk about what can we actually do with that and how can we use that to maybe cover some other stuff.
So, you know, I think maybe, I think June is probably a good time, you know, we'll have a new board member. We'll be able to kind of start.
Yep.
So I think.
Bring everybody up to speed to the same topic, so that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Sounds good.
And then the Warren District, we're just kind of finalizing, um, just the kiosk design and.
For the hall house.
For the hall house, I'm sorry. And so there's been some discussion with the Historical Commission about maybe changing the location of the kiosk in terms of something maybe off-site, so we would need to come back to the board to, you know, make sure that you're okay with that before, before moving, moving forward with that. And you also have to get permission from the other landowner if you're gonna move it.
So it wouldn't be on the property?
No, but maybe we would.
Do they have a recommendation?
Um, so we're looking right now to see if we could put it on Framingham State's property that abuts it.
Oh.
And there's some valid reasons for that.
Okay. Don't look at that.
Okay. Um, is there a timeframe? I don't know if you've talked to Mr. Gustafson as far as when he's going to have that, the, sort of the inside complete or if he wants to, like, we need to have him come back before us for one more.
finalize, yeah.
One more meeting. And I want to do it before he sells that house.
So he can't sell the house until, um, until he, he has the sign off for everything. He just won't get an occupancy permit, so.
And it would be our building department that would issue that, so we would know in advance.
Upstairs.
Yeah, so we would know, so, so like, you know, Duck Scott knows to make sure that we're kind of looped into that before that happens. I just want to make sure, like.
It doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want that to fall through the cracks.
As-is type of deal and then, then you wanna realize is, oh my god.
I just want to make sure we tie things up.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yep.
Before, you know, if, if we, if we give him an occupancy permit and he leaves town, you know, then.
I sort of like to see what he did inside, right? He talked about some interesting. Yeah, I, you know, it might be nice for the community to get to see it as well. If we can do that, even if it's just one time, then.
Maybe the open house will be dual purpose.
The open house.
Good idea.
Maybe somebody would be interested, no, okay.
But historical.
So that's it on the Warren District.
Okay, good. Uh, moving on to town manager reports.
So, um, one thing I just wanted to cover is just going back to the warrant for town meeting and just to discuss speaking roles. And, um, we haven't done that yet, and so Jen and I have gone through and kind of looked at different, uh, different things. So, I just have some recommendations here, tell me what you think. So town reports. So interestingly enough, for town reports, we'll do one on the school budget and then also the municipal budget, which will lead into the FY twenty-four budget, so, which is Article Two. So, um, you know, Jim and Brittany and I could handle that one. Yolanda, would you be open to doing Article Three, which is the transfer to the OPEB trust?
Sure.
Okay. Jim and I were going to discuss the transfer from the SPED stabilization to the general fund. Brandy, would you be okay with doing the annual consent article? That's the one with the revolving funds and all of that stuff. Erin does the CPC articles. Figured Beth and Jen could do the Main Street, the Main Street property. Uh, I was gonna recommend Brittany work with John, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, just a quick question about, about Article Eight with the, with the fire station. Is there gonna, are you guys gonna have like a presentation and some slides? Because I'm thinking, because I'm thinking like, some visuals are probably like a good thing.
Yeah, so we'll probably do not many slides, but, you know, one about process probably and one sort of overview of what we received.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, anything about the specific project, like, anything about Clover Road specifically? Like their, their kind of vision for what it would look like? So I'm just thinking, like, if people can see what, what they're looking to propose, I think it would be a good, good thing, so, um, okay, I'm just curious. Thanks.
Suggesting having Brittany work with John Evans, Superintendent Evans, to discuss the Keefe one. I anticipate Julie will be the one speaking to the citizens petition. If we keep Article Eleven on, which is civil service, it's very likely that we will pull it. But I could speak to that. Funding for INI, we usually do this in the fall, and Joe, you typically handle this one, so you wanna do it in the spring?
Okay.
And we were thinking Rob and Ash could work on doing the specialized stretch code. And then Ash, and if I need to jump in to talk about the net zero greenhouse gas emission in the municipal buildings. So does that make, does that work for everybody?
Sure.
Thank you.
Awesome. And really, that's, that's all I have. One of the things I do want to, um, share with you, you know, not necessarily just kind of give you a preview tonight, and Yolanda, I think, I think you've seen this, so Melissa, our new communications person, has put together an analysis of our social media activity and social media initiatives. And it, it's actually pretty impressive. And so she's put together a nice little report and draft, and so maybe we can discuss that at the next, next select board meeting. Because I, I mean, it's pretty.
It's pretty cool to see.
It's pretty good.
So is that just, is, that's just social media, that doesn't include like email?
Um, I think there's a small reference to email in this letter.
Your town manager's email and Beth's email, I think, in regards to response and stuff, because of how it gets sent out, they can track that.
Yeah. And it's, it's mainly geared towards Facebook and Instagram.
Okay.
And what we're doing.
Okay.
But it's, it's pretty cool.
I think also just, I mean, from what I know about the, the news, the town manager's newsletter, like, the reach in there is, is, it's, it's, it's a, the, it goes out to so many people and there's so many people that really respond really well to it. So I think if we have numbers on that, that would be really good to see.
It's, we do have numbers on that in terms of like open rate, click rate, which is just really.
So sitting here, I just had an idea. I know it goes, the, those, your town manager email goes out to a lot. I'm wondering if it would make sense at one point to ask Mr. Adams to put a plug for it in his email to the, to the schools.
I'm sure.
To say, hey, you know, are you getting the town manager email? You're getting all the information on the schools, how about getting information on the town? It might, might make sense, especially, you know, do it at the end of the school year and at the beginning of the school year, as new people come into town or new, new families get engaged. Might be worth asking him.
I'm sure they would be happy to do that. I mean, we've always, when they've asked.
We do school stuff, yeah, so.
Anyway, that's, that's all I have for tonight. Well, wait a minute. That's not true.
I was gonna say.
So, yeah. Steve, how can, how can I in-town manager reports without addressing you? So I, I told Steve this the other day. Steve was the first person I met, aside from Tony, here in Ashland. And it was at a select board meeting, and, I mean, I remember it clearly. You're behind here and I came over to meet you.
You almost ran out of the building, as I recall.
It was a very intense meeting, very filled, very packed. When I left Town Hall, I had a woman turn back and yell at me that I came at the wrong time. That was, it was an auspicious start to, to, to this. But Steve, you know, I think, um, you know, we've known each other now for ten years and you've, you've been a big supporter, not only of me, but of the rest of the staff, and that has not gone unnoticed. And, you know, we've developed a, a great personal friendship through our professional work, you know, with a shared love of music and art and, you know, lamenting national politics and, you know, some of the things wrong in this state. And, you know, it's something that, you know, Beth and I have always enjoyed having, you know, conversations and dinner with, with you and Bonnie. And, um, you know, I'm, I am a firm believer that when you've got a good team in place, the sum is greater, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. And whenever you move one of those parts, you have to recalibrate everything. And I think you're an integral part of the team that we've put together and we have together for, as, as part of the town. And you're gonna have shoot, big shoes to fill. Said, I don't, I don't know how, you know, I've got faith that things will recalibrate, but, you know, it's always going to be a little bit of a transition period, which, uh, uncomfortable is not the right word, but it's kind of like a learning experience. You've always brought a measured approach to the board and the analysis of, of things. You, you put in a lot of work. You, uh, you ask a lot of questions. I really don't know what I'm gonna do with all my newfound time. So, Steve, Steve has gotten it to the point where, um, so usually our morning conversations would be around eight and Steve gets up at like four thirty, so I, I think it's down to like six thirty now, so. And, uh, so anyway, just thank you for your service.
Well, I, I appreciate that, Michael, and, you know, you and I have, you know, we've had great conversations and I hope we continue to have great conversations and I will continue to send you articles all the time. And, uh, you know, but, uh, I have had to make adjustments, so accommodate you. I mean, Tony was up at four thirty.
That's very true.
Called him.
That's true.
But with you, I've had to learn to have my cup of coffee first, right?
Exactly.
But, uh, no, I appreciate the, uh, the kind words certainly and the friendship and, you know, a lot of years that we've been together as, as a team, all of us here, as a team. And, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's important, I think, that we reflect, you know, that, that we've had a stability here, uh, for a number of years and it's, uh, it's allowed us, I think, to really accomplish a lot of things. Not the small we here, but the big we. And, uh, so, but I have to, I have to comment now, Michael. You know, it's, you, you're, you're, you're an integral part of the team, I get that. But, you know, I'm not quite sure where you fit relative to Jen in this hierarchy.
The packing order, right?
Yes, so, you know, I have to, you know, I have to just, uh, I think, comment on, you know, how much respect I have for Jen in all the work that she has done for this community. And, you know, I think so much of it just goes unnoticed for, for folks, right? You know, typically the town manager and the select board are kind of, you know, in, in, in the line of sight where, you know, Jen and a lot of the folks on staff are just doing this day-to-day work. And it just, everything that, uh, that involves our quality of life as a community. So, you know, Jen, I just, you know, you're turning a little red, which is good, that was my intent.
Yep. Steve and I have discussed this, like how Steve's gonna address this, and I think we, we came up with the perfect phrasing, which, you know, Jen is the most important person people have never heard of.
That's right, that's right. But no, it's been, it's been, you know, certainly my, my honor and pleasure to work with both of you. And, uh, so, Jen, I think I'll still, until we open that damn building and turn over all the keys, we're still gonna work together, so, uh, but, uh, but thank you.
So I'd like to make, and this, I don't know if we can do this, it's not on the agenda and maybe we'll have to do it at our next meeting. I'd like to let Steve continue to be the second select board representative until the building is done. So again, that might have to be at our next agenda or maybe at the meeting before town meeting. I think for someone new to jump in with Joe doesn't make any sense if you're willing to continue to be.
I think the bullet was till completion, the original.
Oh, okay.
I think you're stuck with me.
But I think you, you were doing it as a select board representation.
Yeah, yeah.
A select board representative.
Not as a resident.
Not as a resident, so I think we may have to look at that.
I'd appreciate that.
If necessary, adjust that.
We have to tweak.
So that we can.
Yeah, do it next week.
We need to.
We can do it at the, at the meeting before town meeting.
Okay.
Get that on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Good, thank you, Yolanda.
Well, I've been working on it long enough that you need to-
We're almost there.
I know.
See it through to completion.
See it through to completion.
Was there anything else on your town manager reports? No, we're moving on to, to board reports? I know we kind of all, we kind of did a little bit of Steve on the front end, but, um-
Bonnie, you missed all the fun earlier.
She got here just in time. She just, she got here just in time. So, um, Joe, do you, do you have, um, board reports tonight?
Uh, quick board report is that, um, just quickly, the Ashland Day Committee, uh, has decided that Ashland Day will go on. And, uh, it'll be, um, September twenty-third, so that it doesn't conflict with Rosh Hashanah, which is actually the seventeenth of the sixteenth of September. So we pushed it back a week. And, um, and right now, uh, if you go on the Ashland Day website, ashlandday.com, you'll see the information there, and if anybody's interested in being a vendor or participating, fill out the application and get it back to us. Always looking for bodies, always looking for the young bodies to help out.
Volunteers on, on day of.
On a Friday to set up and Saturday throughout the day. So, and I'll continue saying that until the day comes.
Until September.
So, that is great. My comments to you aren't written down. They come from the heart, my friend. And, uh, you and I are the longest tenured here. And I just want to say it's been a real blast. We had our words, we've had differences, but you know what, we've learned to compromise. And I said it earlier this evening, that everything that we do, we do for the betterment of this community. And I just want to say thank you for making this town and making my tenure on the select board along with Yolanda, uh, who's second longest we've, we've been together. A real, a real hoop. A real hoop, because we've got a lot of work done. If you, if you go back and think of everything that we've done, uh, this town has received a lot of great things. Fields, turf fields, new buildings, new schools. A new town manager that came in with a stable set of budgetary rationale that was very under conservative aspect of it. And going from a rainy day fund that only had five hundred thousand dollars into a six million dollar. But, I mean, these things just don't happen overnight. They take a lot of planning, but it takes leadership, and for us to make those decisions and putting these people in their right, in their right spots comes, comes to mind. So, uh, I'm gonna miss, uh, our little jots that we've had, uh, but we still have the public safety building that can, uh, to work on. I consider you a dear friend. Uh, not only just a colleague, but a good friend. And, uh, thank you for everything that you're doing. Bonnie, thank you for the sacrifice that you've given to this community. Because wives don't, you know, people don't realize that, you know, family commitment, you guys, we all realize what it is. Taking time away from our families. It's just not one day a week, you know, uh, one day out every other week. But there are many nights that we have things that we have to do. I'll go home and study and get prepared for these, for these meetings, and for anything else that comes, comes along. The phone calls that come up that we get, oh, something came up and we need to talk about it. So, all these things come into play, and it's time away from those that we love. And for those who are running, you know, thank you for taking the sacrifice and, and understanding what that sacrifice is going to be. It's, it's just incredible, and it's just not a, it's just not a one-hour-a-day, you know, trip. It's many hours, and it's a lot of hard work. I know when you started, you had a lot of hair. I know when I started, I had a lot of hair. When Michael started. I don't know what it is with the women, they don't lose hair.
But I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, it's been a real blast.
Well, it, it-
And you are professional through and through.
Uh, well, I appreciate that, Joe, and I feel likewise, absolutely, and, uh, you know, I'm gonna miss, uh, you know, what I will miss, uh, is just our relationships and, and just the, you know, just how we interact, uh, as a team. And so I will miss that. But I just want to correct one thing. Yes, you and I have been together the longest as board members, but I need to comment to Sue Roby because, uh, she's been with us as long.
As long, that's right.
Longer, so.
That's right.
Susan, I, I want to thank you for all your support over the years and all the support you've given to, uh, to, to the sele, to select board members since I don't know how long. Uh, but, you know, I really appreciate, uh, you know, all that you've done to, to certainly assist me and to assist all of us.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate it.
So.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take care of some real business and then some other real business. Couple different things, so I got a notification, the tip is out for twenty-four through twenty-eight. And we do have two projects. Our railroad improvement is in for twenty-twenty-five at one point two million dollars. And the Cordovaill Road Bridge is in for twenty-twenty-six at three point eight million dollars. So, what was weird was, like, every other one, it had the name of the town in a little box, and for us it didn't, so I'm not quite sure what's going on there, but. Yeah, okay. Um, I was tasked with meeting with Trish, the woman who reached out to us about doing a statue in honor of Spencer the Dog. I had a great meeting with her and Rich Powers and Susan Hurley regarding the statue. They are all set to do the fundraising, they are not expecting the town to put any funds into it. They like the idea of putting it at the community center, and they'd like to work with us as to where they, we think that should be. They are also having a plan for a maintenance fund, so that they would take care of that. Uh, so what I said to them is I was gonna bring it to our board reports to at least get a gauge of where people are at, if people think they'd still like to support that. And then if that's the case, then they're gonna do some research in regards to a design, how much they think it's gonna cost, and how they're gonna start their funding. And then I would ask that we bring them to one of our meetings in June, if they're ready. Because the idea would be to do the fundraising and potentially get the pla, the statues placed next year, a couple weeks before the marathon. So if people are still, or interested, or, I know it's very, I know there's a very different feel for it, um, so.
Uh, well, I mean, personally, I, I appreciate that you, that you, that you met with them and talked to them. Um, I think that it would, you know, I, I feel like I don't think that it's, I don't think we should spend town energy around a statue for Spencer the Dog. But that's my, that's my personal, that's my personal perspective. Um, I think that we, we honor, we can honor, um, Spencer in possibly a different way. We're talking about the dog park, we're talking about, um, other things that we could potentially do. Me personally, I, I don't, I don't support doing that.
Okay.
But, um, because I just, I just feel that if we were going to honor someone or something with a statue, it wouldn't be a dog from Holliston, no offense to dogs, because I am a dog owner, but that's my personal. That's my personal.
That's fine.
So, um, and I know Joe just stepped out, but, and you're underway.
And I don't know that we have to have a discussion about it now, I'm just, and really, from, from my perspective, what I see is it's me personally working with them, and I have no problem doing it. As I've said to many people, I've known Rich Powers for probably twenty years. Um, I knew, I've known, you know, Spencer since he's had him, I got to interview him. And just some of the stories that you've seen on this dog, the, the national support, the worldwide support, and the only, that I see, the only town resources would be taking a walk there to see where to put the statue. Everything else they would have paid for, so. But again, not, not really on for discussion tonight, but I would think, um, you know, once we have a new board, we can look at that.
Okay.
Uh, next is tomorrow morning, Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting from eight to nine-thirty. We're doing a catch-up with the different communities, and we're doing a DE and I discussion to see how we can support each other regionally in that discussion. So Steve, I want to say congratulations on your twelve years, and I've been sitting with you for eleven of them, but I knew you when you were on FinCom and some of your charter review work, and, and I know this isn't goodbye, because you're stepping up at the Senior Center, you're on the Council on Aging, you're gonna be the representative for the Council on Aging to the Comprehensive Plan. And, and I just want to say thank you for what you've done as a select board member and all the other things that you have done for this community. So many people have already said it very well, so just thank you, and I have appreciated, uh, getting to know you better as we've sat here, and, and as Joe had said, I would consider you my friend as well as my colleague, so. Good luck on the next steps, because I know you're not going anywhere.
Well, not ready to be a spectator yet.
Nice.
But I appreciate that, and, and, and the, the feelings are likewise, mutual, so thank you.
Steve, you want to?
My turn?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, all right, so I'm not gonna, I mean, you know, we've talked about a lot of things already, but, uh, you know, I, I wanted to just, I think, first, just speak a little bit about the stability that we've had as a board and, uh, how that's kind of translated, I think, to, uh, you know, some of the, well, not some, uh, and not small, but the large amount of public investments that we've made as a community over the last, uh, ten years. And, uh, and I think it's important that, you know, it's, I'm talking about the big we, I'm talking about the community at large, because a lot of the projects that have come to us have come, not emanated from the board, they've come from citizens that have advocated for, for certain uh, projects and so on, and I think, uh, we, we need to acknowledge that. But, uh, you know, I think when you look at, uh, the list, and Michael has got, I don't know if you've shared that, your, your spreadsheet of initiatives and accomplishments with-
Like we've referred to it during my, how you referred to it.
Right, but if you have a, a chance to review this, I mean, it's, uh, broken up into a, a number of categories, but when you look at the totality of it in, uh, community development projects and property purchases and public building construction, infrastructure projects, green initiatives, cost savings, and, and then I added financial stability, because I think, Joe, you talked about this earlier. You know, where we stand as a community today, uh, as opposed to when we first came on the board twelve years ago, it's, it's, it's pretty dramatic. And, and, you know, I think, uh, you know, a lot of these, uh, accomplishments and initiatives emanate from you and your leadership, uh, for the community, so, uh, but I think it's, it's impressive what we've, we, the big we, have accomplished over, over the last, uh, ten or twelve years. And, you know, that kind of segues into that, um, you know, that Metro West breakfast, uh, comment from one of the speakers that was, you know, talking about, uh, facing challenges and how nothing of any significance is ever accomplished alone. And, uh, you know, I think we're fortunate to live in a community where we've got so many, so many community members, so many residents that embrace volunteerism and, uh, and just make, uh, improve our quality of life, so, uh, uh, I don't want to ramble too much here, but, uh, I think, I just want to read one thing. I, I did a post today on Facebook, just kind of summing up some of my, my thoughts this morning. And, but one thing I do want to, uh, I think, read directly from it, and it's related to, to town staff, and, and, "We take much of our world for granted. It seems that we live in a society that often does not value the efforts and challenges of providing municipal services or understand how a small town operates. From fire and police personnel, DPW crew, elder and human services team, the town hall staff, our community quality of life depends on the women and men who provide these services. It has been an honor to be associated with so many dedicated town employees, and I extend many thanks and best wishes to, to everybody that, that's a member of, of the Ashland team." So, uh, uh, and then, I think, lastly, I guess, uh, I think it's fair to say that we all have been fortunate with good health, with, you know, great families, friends, you know, colleagues. Uh, and I guess if I had one piece of advice to, uh, to share, is that just to maintain a place in your hearts and your minds for those that are less fortunate. And to, you know, always, you know, think about that when you're making decisions of, uh, that impact, uh, our community. So, I guess I think that's a wrap from this chair, and, uh, uh, think globally and act and shop locally. So that's it.
That's your, that's your, your last board report.
I'm sticking to it.
All right.
Man, nothing about Otis, I was waiting for that.
I know, I know, I know. We love Otis. Um, so just a couple of things. Um, one, I just wanted to, um, thank the Sustainability Committee, SAM, and, um, our sustainability coordinator, and Becca Solomon, our conservation agent, and Beth Reynolds for the Earth Day Festival at Corner Spot this last weekend. It was a not warm day, but it was, um, turnout was, was pretty decent, I, I would say.
Especially for a last-minute switch.
Yeah, so we moved it from Sunday to Saturday, and we included, um, Clover Road was there. Um, they got to meet some good people. Beth had said that they were pretty happy with the conversations that they were having, and they were encouraging folks to come to town meeting, which is great. So, um, I hope that the Earth Day celebration is a kind of a, an annual thing that, that comes to Corner Spot, I think it was good. Um, just want to remind folks, um, that Yolanda and John Featherstone are gonna be doing Candidates Night on Monday, May first, here at Town Hall, starting at six.
Starting at six? Starting at six, so we're starting with the Board of Health members that are, are up for election, then the School Committee, and then the Select Board. It will, uh, go out live via WACA as well as livestream. And then we're gonna break it up into three sections, so it will continue to be shown, but it's three separate sections, so if, if you don't get to watch Monday night live, you can say, okay, I want to watch the Board of Health, or the School Committee, or the Select Board. And it's just the contested races.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you guys for putting that together along with, with, uh, WACA TV, who's gonna be, um, doing all the work on the backend of it. Um, and if people have questions to submit for the candidates, they can send that into, um, it's an email address to WACA.
Yeah.
I don't have it offhand, but it's, it's, Yolanda, I'm sure will come up with it.
I should know it offhand, but.
Um, but please submit questions to the candidates, um, so Yolanda and John have something to ask them, so.
It'll be on our, it'll be on the Around the Clock Facebook page, and it's also gonna be in, I think, the town manager's email as well.
Okay.
So, and maybe I'll find it before you're done.
Okay. Um, the other thing I just wanted to mention is that, um, office, I'm, so we're doing sort of like these official office hours that have gone out through, like, the, um, town manager's newsletter. Yolanda had hosted office hours this past weekend over at Bagel Table. Um, I am doing office hours on May tenth, um, which is a Wednesday night in Town Hall. It's actually coinciding with early voting, so I am gonna be downstairs in the kitchen having office hours, so. Um, so there was conversations about where, you know, because I'm like, I want to be where the voters are. I don't want to be up here in the select board room, nobody will make it up to the second floor, no, nobody would come up here. So, I would suggest if anybody, um, has questions or concerns, or just wants to chat and say hi, um, I'm gonna have candy, so I'm gonna, like-
Well, you're better than me, I didn't have that.
I, I need something, I need something, so.
I have the email address, so if you'd like to send in a question for the Candidates Forum on Monday night, it is WACA TV Ashland at gmail dot com.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And since we won't be meeting, um, as a group like this until, um, until after the election, just reminding folks that town elections are Tuesday, May sixteenth, at the high school from eight AM to seven PM? Eight AM? Seven, seven to eight. Thank you. I know there's people that know this more than me, so thank you.
With early voting, Wednesday is Saturday, right?
Yeah, yeah. See, you know, it's good to have an audience.
The tenth is eight to seven, the sixteenth is seven to eight.
Okay, thank you.
And the tenth is a s-
It's on the website.
Yeah.
We're good. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, remind people to come on out and vote, whether it's, um, mail-in or early voting, or, um, in-person at the high school on the sixteenth, because, um, all votes count. Um, and then just finally, like, I know I did a poem for you, Steve, but-
I love that poem, you have to send it to me.
I will send it to you. So, you know, when I was thinking about, um, just, you know, how we connected and how, you know, I started this whole journey. You were the first person I sat down with to talk to about running for, for, for a select board, and, um, and then when I got elected, you were, you had taken over as chair, and like, I just remember you calling me all the time, just checking in on me. Are you ready for the meeting, do you have any questions? Like, you were, like, that was, it, coming in as the newest member of the board was, it's like drinking from a fire hose. It really is, because you think, you, so, so, you know, we have a couple candidates here. So, you think you kind of know what's going on? And then, it's really, it really is, I, I remember, like, being shell-shocked. Um, you think you know what's going- Um, you think you know what's going on in town and then you realize that you really only know twenty percent of what's really happening because everything else is still kind of in process. And so, um, you learn a lot really quickly and it can be really overwhelming. And so I was really lucky to have a really great board that really just, you know, embraced me, but... And everyone, everyone did. But Steve was the one that like would, he, you would call me and check on me. And, and, um, and I appreciated that in a, in a big way, so...
Thank you, I've got a great picture of you and Joe and I at Burnham's after the, the first election. And, uh, but, uh, you know, you're, you're, you're so right about the, the learning curve. And, uh, you know, which makes me reflect even more on, you know, how the town manager and the assistant town manager are able to manage and juggle everything that goes on in this community that, you know, that we only taste a small part of, right? So it really is incredible, but, uh, you know, I, I just, uh, one of the comments I neglected to make was just to, we've got two of the candidates for Select Board in, in the room tonight and I just wanna extend, uh, good luck and best wishes, uh, you know, for whoever fills this seat. But you will have a learning curve without question, you know, regardless of your experience on other boards, you know. I think we all came from other, other boards before we got here. And so, um, I just, it's gonna be a learning curve, so... And I, I wanna say you've been a great chair.
Oh, thank you.
This has been a great year and, uh, you know, I think you've managed, uh, you know, the meetings and the agendas and I think it's been, you know, certainly it's been a pleasure to serve with you.
Oh, thank you. It's been, I, I just wanna thank you, you know, like it's just been a really, um, it's, it's, you know, our board has been together for, it's been four years now. And I know you guys have been working together a lot longer than this, but it's just the, the amount... I don't think people understand the amount of time and effort that goes into doing the work we do. And it's a commitment, it's not just, you know, Joe had mentioned, you know, it's not just, it's, it's not just you, it's, it's your family too. I mean, there's so many, there's, you know, you have to have a supportive system behind you to be able to...
And it's not just the meetings, right? It's, and it's not only just preparing for the meetings. It's, I mean, I think out of all four of us, we all have at least two or three or four other things that we do as Select Board members that don't always get seen by the community, so...
So, but I just wanted to thank you for really all that you've done for, for us as a board and then just, you know, in general in the community.
I appreciate that.
Ashland's a better place because of you, Steve Mitchell.
Well, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
And that is all from me, so unless anyone else has anything, do you want...
Just one business item.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, Jen and I will be doing a forum tomorrow on the Town Meeting Warren articles, um, starting at five thirty. We'll do it hybrid, we'll do it up here. So if you have questions or anything and wanna learn more about the articles, please come. That feels really bad to end on, so I'm gonna turn it back a little bit to you.
The work never stops.
The work never stops, so, um, but that's good, that, that'll, that'll be good. We will see everyone hopefully at the high school on the third for town meeting, starting at seven PM. And, um, our next scheduled Select Board meeting outside of the meeting with the planning board will be on, um, Wednesday, the seventeenth, so if, um, if, uh, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
Excuse me, I have to interrupt, there is something else. There is something else.
Well, let's, how about this?
We're having cake, but I say motion to adjourn.
Okay. And is there a second?
We need a second. Go ahead, Steve, do a second.
Second, second.
All those in favor?
You know how, I, you know how bad I wanna just, but...
So, we wanna enjoy it.
So on that note, um, I just wanna thank everyone for joining us and for everyone that had come to, to support Steve tonight too. And, um, and now that there's cake involved, I think we are, we are all set for tonight and we are adjourned at nine fifteen this evening. So goodnight, everyone, we'll see you at town meeting next Wednesday.
Goodnight, thank you.
Thank you.